Mr. Mayor, we have one change in the agenda. It was simply an error on four A five. The agenda itself says approve gambling premise permit and it says Shakopee Lions. It actually should say Amets Post One. Everything in the memo and everything else is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Yost.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second to the contrarians? Motion made seconded by contrarians to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, all opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, consent business. Mr. Whiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The consent business is loaded with grants, so Mr. Reynolds can point out some of the wonderful money that the city of Shakopee is bringing in through grants. And I'll, he can mention that with the consent business, I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Whiting, why don't you go ahead and make the recognition of them grants if it's on your mind?
I do, I have them all listed here, yeah, thank you. We got a grant from the Minnesota Historical Society for seventy-seven thousand five hundred for the cultural corridor. Correct me if I'm wrong, you can check my notes here. The DNR gave us forty-two thousand four hundred. City had to match in there, but it's for archaeological work on Memorial Park. FEMA gave us some money, PPE for firefighters, I'm not sure if there's numbers on that. But Congress gave us seventy, seven hundred and fifty thousand. I think I posted some wrong numbers out there online, but that was for the cultural corridor, seven hundred and fifty there. Congress gave us through EPA, that other one was through HUD. This is EPA, three point five for the Riverbank stabilization. From HUD, again, Congress, one point five million for our innovation center. And I don't want to forget Shakopee Soccer, a thousand dollars.
There you go.
Yeah, that's great. So I'll make that motion to approve that consent business.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Delaney, motion made by Mr. Whiting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five. Recognition of, recognition of. No, nope. It's not a requirement and it's redundant since it's posted and it's.
I covered some of it.
Item number five, thanks anyway. Item number five, recognition of involved residents by the city council. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to us tonight on an item not on the agenda, please step up to the table here and give us your name and your address. Anybody in the audience that would like to address us tonight? Last call. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number six. There was no items removed from the consent agenda. Item number seven, a motion to adjourn to the EDA would be appropriate.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adjourn to the EDA meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yost, seconded by Mr. Delaney to adjourn to the EDA. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Madam President.
I make, I call to order the Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting for February seventh, two, twenty twenty-three. First on our agenda is the roll call. Staff, if you could make note of our attendance, please. Second, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Delaney, a second?
And I will second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number three, consent business. On the consent business, we have our three A EDA minutes and three B plans for public bidding for improvements for the River Center, City Center.
Can we remove three B from consent?
Yes, sir. Three B is removed.
Then I would make a motion to approve the consent business as modified, including the EDA minutes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have a motion and a second and all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number four is our general business and now we have three A, which is our, our public, our plans for the public bidding for improvements to the River Center, City Center, sorry. Mr. Kurski here to present.
Madam President and Board members, so this is the sending out for bids, the drawings that were completed under your direction by RSP Architects, Confluence and SEH. And Kraus Anderson will be doing that bidding, who is our construction manager's agent. And all of those bids will come back to you.
Commissioner Whiting?
Oh, thank you, Madam President. These are the, so we're talking about River City Center, that's where we, the city, EDA owns that lower floor or building, but we're maintaining the lower floor and this work will be done on the lower floor only. Windows, doors and sidewalk work is up.
Madam President and Board members, so it does include the bays on this building have deteriorated, so we worked with the CDA that is part of this project. Those will be painted and the asphalt shingles on the top of those will be removed and replaced with metals so that.
The bay windows, you're saying?
Yep. And then it also includes some significant street scapeing. The city council has talked for a number of years about starting to replace the streetlights in downtown, so I believe there's approximately ten streetlight fixtures that will be replaced as part of this project. And then in the back, there's been complaints for years that parking lots really dark, so they are planning to install streetlights along the northernmost section of the property. And then a lot of the landscaping for the past several years has died, so that will be replaced with salt resistant landscaping. The other thing that we're doing, y'all approved a contract with Helmut and Johnson to work with the CDA to basically create a condominium there. So the city will own separately the first floor, the CDA will own the upper floors, then there'll be an outlot, which will be the city's public parking lot. The other thing is that we discussed last year, the building has had major water infiltration problems because the sidewalk actually pitches the wrong way. We can't necessarily move the building, so what we're doing is creating a silver cell, which we used on Lewis Street pretty effectively. That will collect all the stormwater and if there's a major hundred year event, it'll go through that system and then slowly go into our stormwater system.
Commissioner Mayman?
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of questions, the, one, I'm really concerned about the estimated cost of this, like three million dollars. Is there any way that any of these linked, I, I get it that some things are linked to where you have to do one thing to do the net, do the other. Are there anything, things in, in this bid that, that could be separated? So when the bids come back, some things can be done, some things could be removed as alternates? Kind of cautious about the cost of this.
So Madam President and Board members, we've had all of our engineers and architects and landscape architects look at that along with Kraus Anderson. And there's actually a fairly competitive bidding environment right now. They've actually gotten a lot of calls about this project, so their suggestion was to put it out to bid. We don't believe it would make sense to kind of break it up. We did look at that because the entire sidewalk for the entire length, the first avenue needs to be removed. That's now going to expose all the utilities that we need to fix anyway. And it does have an impact on all the storefronts because that's some of the areas are leaking. The storefronts are about twenty-five years old. And in box elder season, somehow the box elders have been able to get into those thermal paint storefronts, so they're all failing. So that's another major issue. We've got a lot of complaints from the tenants we have in there that, particularly when it's really cold, they're getting snow and ice, for instance, through their doors. So we're kind of at a position, and I've talked to some of you, but the last, we'll call them owner of this space before this, the EDA took over, for twenty-five years didn't really do any maintenance and repairs. Because unfortunately, the agreement they worked out, they never made any money. I think that working with our finance office here, we've been able to kind of restructure the deal, that this project actually has a decent cash flow. And so by making these investments, I think it's a long term, the EDA theoretically is going to own this a long time and this will stop, I think, a lot of the issues we're having. And then as the leases come up, we've already been able to retain a couple of the people because they know they're going to be getting, for instance, new storefronts. I know the florists that moved in there, one of their conditions was that we get some of these issues fixed on the outside. And so they did sign a longer term lease because of that.
Thank you, Mr. Kurski. Any other questions from our commissioners?
Madam Chair, Mr. Kurski, first of all, thank you for taking time out of your busy day to day to walk through the property with me and show me the issues they're having with the sidewalks. And as, as I was looking at it, I was thinking about after we went through it. And I, I guess the biggest concern I have is not to go down the same road again. And that's to know the maintenance that's going to take place and who's going to take care of it. So that twenty-five years from now, another city council isn't sitting here with the same issue. And you and I discussed it, but I thought we should share that with the rest of the council.
Thank you. So Madam President and Board members, we have our economic development, economic development specialist, John Sullivan, that's one of his main projects, so he's down there on a regular basis. And we have now developed a list of contractors we have on call because nothing was really done on the inside either, so we've been fixing those items as we go. And I think the only thing in twenty-five years that probably have to replace the storefronts again, just because they have a, a certain period of life. But I think the drainage problem should be solved once and for all. The really bad caulking job will be fixed this time around. And I think for downtown stability, that building has been kind of one of the issues all the investors and people that have looked at Shakopee have kind of said, what, what's wrong with that building? I think that kind of the refresh will help us in long term get the rents up. We are probably, depending which tenant it is, eight to ten dollars below market and we just can't get it right now because of, of, of the condition of the building. And some of those tenants have been in there a long time and will probably move if we raise their rents. I think as we re-tenant the building, best example, there's a concrete company in the old bank space. Why they're in there, I'm not really sure, but their lease is up soon and that's, architects have looked at it and the engineers have looked at, that's a perfect space for hospitality use or restaurant, coffee shop type space. It's just not a good bank space and it's certainly not a good space for a concrete company. So that will help our rents, I think, longer term.
Thank you. Commissioner Whiting?
Well, thank you. You know, this building is, has had a lot of history in Shakopee.
I, I learned some today from.
Yeah, you did. Couple of you guys know, yeah, Mr. Yost may have been well part of that. So it's, it's different because as an EDA, we own property and the city council, we, we still do it, but this is a little different as an EDA. And it's a focal point of Shakopee. When you drive in, that's the first thing you see. And we've done so much work trying to just enliven our downtown and it's really come a long way. And, and the businesses tell me that when I'm down there, they're saying, you know, they're just so happy about how, how things are going. So we want to make sure we're maintaining our property down there. And so it doesn't become the blight that it once was, or we forced on it, however you want to look at it. So with that, I would make a motion to approve Resolution E twenty-nine twenty-three, Tac zero zero one, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for River City Center renovation, streetscape, streetscape and parking lot improvements.
We have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll second.
Thank you, we have a second. All in favor? Or discussion, sorry, does any, any discussion? Discussion?
Well, just one comment is, as I go through and I see it, and we talk about these maintenance issues, but for some of us old timers, the old part of it that this replaced was, I don't know, we could get that bad again, could we, Jay?
It was really cool, but for history's size, but, but we kind of blighted it, but it was the alley side of it. There's, there are many different discussions.
There was. But yeah, this is, this is a big improvement, but we do need to make sure that we make it and keep it the focal point.
Well, and the old stuff that was there was built to a different standard back in.
Oh, yeah.
The focal point.
Back in the older days.
Well, you're, yeah, sort of.
At one point, yeah.
Depends which way you're looking at it.
Sometimes it was the wrong focus, too. Right, Chief? I digress, I'm sorry.
No, we're good, thank you. So any more discussion before we vote? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number five, reports. We have our EDA bill list. Anybody have any questions on that one? If not, looking like we don't, we can go to number six, adjournment. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, March seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Commissioner Delaney, second. All righties, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We're adjourned.
Thank you, Madam President. We'll move on as a city council to item nine A one, monthly financial review. Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight I have a presentation on the financial results through December of twenty twenty-two. So it's still pretty early within our process. We're still posting payables back and receivables back and general entries, so these amounts will change as, as we go forward. Our audit is scheduled for April seventeenth, so probably about, about a month after that, you'll be able to get our final report. This slide shows the general fund through December. Our preliminary results show we ended positive for the year. If you look at the bottom line, it shows a net positive of one point five million in the twenty twenty-two year to date actual column. I'll elaborate further on what this means on the next slide, but wanted to give you some information on this slide first. Beginning with revenues in total, we're at a hundred and five percent of budget or about one point six five million above or over budget. For taxes, which is primarily property taxes, we do have one additional final settlement that we collected in January that has not been posted for about eighty thousand, but we're at about ninety-nine percent of budget. Currently, collections for the year were at ninety-eight point six percent. The difference represents both valuation adjustments and unpaid property taxes. Revenues will increase with, when the city records the final settlement and then when the fourth quarter cable franchise fees are received, which I think we've received this week.
Can I hold you up for one second?
Yep, go ahead.
I'm just going to let the council know that if you have a question, just jump in and ask it while we're moving here instead of trying to go back pages and remember. The first, the question I have is the miscellaneous under revenue is negative two, two hundred and thirty-three percent. What's, what's the, what's going?
Sure, so that, so that would include investment earnings, which also includes your unrealized loss or market value adjustment. With the rising interest rates in twenty twenty-two, as we've kind of discussed in, in previous meetings, it was a, a negative adjustment. So that you'll see that also when we talk about the investment report as well.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
In, in regards to that, are we just seeing no growth? Well, I mean, like, this is a market thing, as I understand it. We was, we have funds that, and I saw the little sly, little description of how our investments are kind of set out. Is it just that we just didn't see a growth or we saw a decrease like everybody else experienced?
So we, so with our investment earnings, it's made up of two different things, right? And I'll touch base on a couple of slides as we go forward, but it'll be your in, interest income. And then we're required to mark it down to what the value is at the end of the year as of twelve thirty-one. So with last year, with the interest rates rising, the market, the market values decreased in order to get to the equivalent interest rate of what they are currently. So if we've had investments that were, you know, invested last year for two or three years down the road, you'll see that come down. But as they get closer to par or when they get closer to maturity, because we hold them all until maturity, they'll end up, you know, picking back those unrealized losses into unrealized gains or unrealized gains and they eventually just.
You're talking about bonds and things like that, correct?
Correct, yeah. And it's really interesting to actually see the yield curve that right now, if you have money in your checking account, it's earning more interest than if you invested it five years down the road. So the expectation is that interest rates will come down is what basically the markets are telling you.
And do we have fund balances that are invested as well?
Correct.
Is that showing in there as well or is that another?
Yeah, that, it's, we pool all our money in together into one investment pool, right? So whether it's in this fund or that fund, it's all pooled together within the same and then allocated out with interest and investment earnings.
Okay.
You'll see that in the next couple of slides and we're going to point that, point out a couple of things there.
Yeah, and, and what we're seeing here with that negative market value adjustment is no different than you would see with any other city. So it's not like where the outlier is just unfortunate that you've got this adjustment at the end of the year, right? So I talked about property taxes or taxes. Special assessments, you also see a negative amount. This is the recent assessment of the refuse bill. We'll recover these amounts through the special assessment process and those eventually will net out even. Licenses and permits exceeded the budget amount and we're ahead of last year, primarily a result of building permit revenue. In twenty twenty-two, the city received permits for three apartment buildings, fifty-seven townhomes and two hundred and three single family homes. Total permit value was three hundred and fifty-six million in twenty twenty-two compared to two hundred and fifty million in twenty twenty-one. Enter governmental is currently ahead of budget targets. This is a result of the, the gas tax, which is ended up being higher than we had budgeted for. Charges for services are currently under budget, but this will be adjusted with the Shakopee Public Utilities Pilot True Up. It's actually will be about, well, it is about seven hundred thousand. That'll be added to this charge of service line item. The primary variance we did see was in engineering fees, where we had vacancies through the engineering department, so we didn't necessarily build those out to projects and. Yeah, we didn't necessarily build those out to projects, which you might have seen in the past. And then I talked about the miscellaneous, which included the net adjustment for unrealized loss. Expenditures in total were at about ninety-nine percent or about four hundred and thirty-four thousand below budget. If you recall at our, our meeting, I think it was two meetings ago, we brought forward budget, budget amendments with the intent, intention that all departments would come in underneath the amended budget. However, you can see there's six departments that it didn't quite work out that way, which I just wanted to touch on those, those overages for those departments. City clerk, which primarily is a result of the modus election management software subscription, which we had not included in the budget. Facilities currently exceeding the budget amount primarily as a result of building maintenance costs for the year, which has ended up being much higher than it has been the past few years. Fire is currently exceeding the budget amount primarily as a result of the payment of state aid to the fire relief, so that's just a pass through. So we also, we're ahead on the revenue side, the same amount. The building inspection department exceeded primarily a result as we missed including one of the health insurance in the budget for one of our building inspectors. Engineering expenditures, expenditures were currently under budget target. That was a result of a number of the vacancies we had within that department. And park maintenance was over as a result of how we allocated time. So if you look at the public works division in total, including street maintenance and fleet, they, they'll allocate their times based on actual hours worked. And in this case, parks was a little bit higher than those other two divisions. And then recreation expenditures were currently over budget as a result of building maintenance costs and operating supplies. But again, even these overages for these departments really have a, quite a minor impact on our operating results this year. So kind of what this means, so I talked about the one point five million being ahead in twenty twenty-two at this point in time. I think that's grown a little bit since I've put this together. And again, we haven't had a chance to fully dive into the numbers, but it gives you an idea of kind of where we're at right now. So in addition to booking payables and receivables, there's a couple of fund balance adjustments that will occur, committed fund balance for building permit revenue. So this adjustment would be to increase the committed fund balance for building permit revenues that still have open permits, which would set, set aside the money for future building inspection costs and related programs for those open permits. This increases the committed fund balance from one point four three to two point three three. And then the second one being our fund balance policy requires the city to set aside thirty-five to fifty percent of channel front and operating expenditures based on the twenty twenty-three budget. If we want it to be at fifty percent, because we've also seen an increase in operational costs, it would require about a one point one million dollar increase. So it has been past practice that if we had one time or an excess general fund that we look at one time expenditures or, or capital needs. But at this point in time, it doesn't look like we'll have an available balance for one time things like we have in the past couple of years. And then just a couple of slides on investment earnings and I hopefully will answer a couple of council questions here. But I've included the, the full fourth quarter investment report within your packet. This slide just shows interest earnings for the year in comparison to the previous four years. The blue line being twenty twenty-two, we're at about a million for the year, which is up about two hundred and eighty thousand from last year. And I expect this to continue into twenty twenty-three if we've seen significant increase in rates over the past year, year and a half. And then the second one, where I talk about the market value adjustment, and again, it's the blue line. With the upward shift in interest rates, which has been a pretty significant market value adjustment. So the adjustment is on paper, as we do intend to hold all these investments until they mature. But looking at the market value adjustment for the year of three point eight million, for our, for our financials, we're required to make this adjustment just once a year on, on December thirty-first. And then as I mentioned before, we, I'd expect this to likely be a unrealized gain next year as we get closer to those values or those investments becoming, well, maturing. So when you combine both interest earnings and unrealized adjustment, we're at, we're at a deficit in twenty twenty-two of two point seven million.
Excuse me, wouldn't new investments at new rates with higher interest rates also cause that line to go up?
You, not necessarily, especially this year where we saw interest rates tick up each month. So if I invested something in January, come February, I already had unrealized loss, right? So that doesn't mean you necessarily want to not have anything invested because as you know, rates go up and down. As long as you stick to the same plan, you always do, over time, it ends up, you know, working itself out. But where that has, the biggest impact is obviously your interest earnings as interest rates go up, you're investing at high rates, right? But if the interest rates continue to go up, then you're in the situation where, you know, you're seeing unrealized losses.
Not a pretty picture.
Well, and if, for those that were on the council at the time, if you remember in, in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we specifically talked about our unrealized gains. And we were all very happy then, but we also said at that point, yeah, it looks good on paper, but the reality is, as, as Nate had, had talked about, is that we hold these investments till maturity. So, you know, we, we, we have unrealized loss now and then we had unrealized gain before, but with our long term investment strategy, you know, it'll all come out at the end.
And actually where I've seen kind of the biggest tip, tick up in the past few months from where we're at at the start of the year is actually in our checking account and our shorter term stuff. So it's, it's nice because you're always going to have a, some cash you're holding for operating. So to actually be able to benefit from increased rates on the things you're just holding for normal week to week operations is definitely a benefit. So the, that'll definitely impact us in twenty twenty-three where we have a full year of those higher rates. Well, you never know where next month will bring, but ideally that'd be the case.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So what I see from this and listening to your, is that state of course is pretty much the, the scenario that we're staying. We don't want to knee jerk at going down and, and knee jerk when we're.
Yeah, you're not trying to time the market because you, you'll never be able to predict what's going to happen. So in, in this particular case, what I envision happening is where we've seen this line go down and down, it's going to come back up and up. So next year, you'll probably be above that zero mark and see unrealized gains.
Fair enough, because I, I think to people at home, sometimes they look at these things, they go, what is that if they're watching? Fair enough, because I, I think to people at home, sometimes they look at these things, they go, what is that if they're watching? And it's good to know that it's, it's kind of a cyclical thing, I guess is, not a better term.
Yeah, that is correct, yeah. Yeah, especially with, with fixed income investments where you're, everything's based on where the rates are at the market.
And it's a long, it's a snapshot of a long-term investment.
Right. So we do look at that.
Any other questions? Otherwise, that's actually all I have for the presentation.
Questions? No questions, thank you. Item nine A two, regional training facility discussion. Who's leading this one off?
I'll kick it off first, Mr. Mayor. The scale had just recently done a study on the future of the RTF and all of the different partners, a part of the overall agreement funding the RTF have, are in the process of this month of bringing this discussion up to all of our councils to discuss and take a harder look at the RTF, where it is now and what its future may or may not be. Just from a historical perspective, we, the funding for the RTF is based upon population, specifically the population of our police and fire. And essentially us being the largest by far for both of those in, in the county, we garner the most expense for the building other than Scott County itself. And for years in the past, since I've been here, every now and then I'll have a council member, you know, just ask me, why are we a part of this? And the reality is, is that we certainly could train cheaper elsewhere. And my, my response was always, well, we're in this agreement. This is not the time to pull out of the agreement. And, and frankly, because we're a part of the agreement, I tell our fire and police that they need to use the facility as much as they can so we can get as much as our value out of it as possible. The reality is, you know, we're probably looking at thirty-five, forty, eh, thirty-five a year loss, if you would look at it that way, from what we could actually save by doing other training. Now, the issue for us obviously is if the RTF is going to have a major infusion of cash, I fully expect that that price tag would go up for each of the partners. And from, from my perspective and both our interim fire chief and our current police chief are here specifically to talk about their training needs and also answer any questions you have about what they see about the facility and, and why it's kind of a problem for the city of Shakopee. It's not a problem for the smaller cities that are in the southern part of the county. Frankly, it's a good deal for them. But it doesn't meet our needs currently. And if there is going to be a major infusion of cash, we would have to probably look at options for the city itself. You know, do we be a part of this agreement? Carver County has, who used to be one of the original partners of the agreement, is no longer a part of the agreement. And one of the real rubs, if you will, from the partner's perspective is, is that someone from the outside can actually rent it to do their training on a daily basis for a heck of a lot cheaper than what our annual fees are for our use, for what we use it for. So it, we're at a crossroads with, with the facility. We have members of Scott County that, that are here that are more than happy to give a presentation on the facility itself so you understand what's going on with it. I've been a critic of us being, putting any more in, money into the facility because frankly, there are facilities that are designed, it reminds me of old city hall. Old city hall wasn't a city hall, it was a bank. It was designed as a bank and we tried to make it a city hall and it was terrible for workflow. It, it, it didn't, it didn't, it didn't serve that purpose. One of the good things about the facility is the range. I think everybody would say that that is certainly a, a plus. But it's an old dormitory, old mud. Sanatorium at one point, you know, so it, it was never designed to be what it is. And we have facilities in the metro area that clearly are designed for that from the ground up. So anyway, we'll, we'll have Scott County, if they want to come up and talk about it and I'll put the.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, appreciate the opportunity. My name's Chris Meyer, I'm the interim facility manager out there. I, I joined about the middle of August of this year when the longtime facility manager retired after fifteen years. I also have Brad Davis, our planning and resource management director with us tonight. And Troy Beam is our fleet and facilities manager with us tonight. So the intent for my presentation tonight is kind of to walk through the history. Mr. Reynolds took some of my, my presentation from me, but we'll go through this. And just to kind of set the stage, in the, probably about the middle of January, LHB is the company that did this study. They came out and presented to the board, which of course you have some, some membership on, some people that have attended that meeting as well. They kind of walked through the study, so I'm not going to take their presentation verbatim. I'm going to just kind of walk through some of their things that they presented, high level. And then just to make a note that at this point, the RTF board has not reconvened and made any decisions as far as what option, what scenario. This study, they were given the task of coming up with some scenarios. So they came back and we'll get into that of three different scenarios. And we know there's probably a hundred and three different scenarios that we could look at in this place. But, so I'm going to touch on their three and, and we'll, we'll kind of go from there. The RTF board will come back together again, I think their next meeting is on March tenth. The Scott County Board just looked at the same exact information that you're going to see here this morning at their workshop. And again, they have not made any recommendations and have not made any determinations on any, any process forward. So again, just a little bit of the history, for those of you that may not know, this was, this all came together in about two thousand eight. And it, it's comprised out there of that wonderful historic building. The two shooting ranges, we have the fire tower across and the fire ground and some miscellaneous props over there for, for firefighting. The membership, of course, is all of the, the cities in the county, Scott County themselves. SMSC is a member and then Scott, or Carver County joined later on after everything was formed late in two thousand eight. As Mr. Reynolds kind of mentioned, the finances. So this was originally a five million dollar bond, that'll go through the fiscal year of twenty twenty-seven. So as part of your fees that you're paying every year, part, about fifty percent of those fees go to pay for the bond and about fifty percent of those fees go to pay for the operation of the facility. And then there was also additional three one million dollar grants that went into some renovations over the years, as you can see in oh eight, ten and twenty thirteen. This is a kind of a breakdown of the member contributions from the inception. And there's some language in the agreements that there was supposed to be an escalation in fees and, and, and membership contributions. That really hasn't happened, so you can see that has been pretty stagnant across the board pretty much. And good and bad, it's good for the operational side of, of the members. The bad side is, is now we're faced fifteen years later with a lot of maintenance items that have been deferred just because of the lack of funding over the course of those, those years. And, and now it's a bigger ticket item maybe on some of those things that if they would have been maintained a little different going forward, we wouldn't be near in the situation it is today. But, so those are some of the numbers there. Facility usage, so historically we track a few things out there. We track, we track hours by agency. So if Shakopee comes out and they were out today, we, we track the agency hours and then we also track contact hours. So each officer from Shakopee that comes through the door, we track that individually. The other thing that's interesting is we track shots fired in the facility for the year. So this in twenty twenty-two, as a facility, there was just a little under three hundred thousand shots went through those two ranges. And as members, Shakopee took the award this year for the most shots fired out there, beating Savage by about five hundred shots, so good job there. So here's our contact hours by the years and you can just kind of see what COVID did and it's coming back a little bit. But this tells us that there is eight thousand two hundred and seventy people that came through the door out there in some fashion, either fire or police that trained out there or education. We have corrections, we have, you know, civic groups that come in. So that's as a whole, attendance, I would say, is a good way to look at that number for twenty twenty-two. This is agency. Now, again, like I said, these numbers are a little different because Shakopee PD comes out, we count that as one hour instead of if there's thirty officers, we'd count it as thirty hours. So this is agency and we like to look at member not versus non-member. So as you can see, we have had some good support over the course of the years with some outside agencies that come in and fill some of that downtime to help cover some of the operational costs as, as those go by during the year. And here's the city of Shakopee contact totals for this year. And again, this is by the, the agency. So again, fell off a little bit, a little bit during COVID, came back in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two was down a little bit in comparison to some earlier years. Since I've been around in August, they're there all the time. So I don't know, the four eleven, it's a number, but I, I, they just seem to be in the hallways every day. Today, they were there and I scheduled with one of your sergeants four or five other things that they're going to be doing in the next coming weeks and months. So again, they, they are out there, they are, they are in the building and we do appreciate that. So then looking at the future, so again, the, the part of the study was look at where we were, what we have and where we may go. And again, this is where we get into those three scenarios. And this is kind of the breakdown of what happened with the study. So they were charged with doing a preliminary needs assessment. So they again reviewed all the agreements and who's obligated to do what, looked at the finances. They interviewed some of our leadership. They had the stakeholder engagement surveys and interviews, which again, were not, in my opinion, very successful. Our, our rate on, return on those surveys were, was a little just over fifty percent and the interviews were at about twenty percent. So a lot of our stakeholders didn't step up and, and really take part on the, in the one-on-one interviews, which I thought would have, would have gained some much better knowledge maybe as we went forward. So when they got all this survey information together, and it's depicted a little bit different and in a little different ways. So LHB would come back over the course of this study and they would report back to the board. A few of those I was part of, since I joined, a few of them happened before I came along. But the survey results was one meeting, so they, they really went through all the survey results, the good, the bad, the ugly, the, all the details were, were, went over with the board point by point as far as what, what those survey results were and there was some discussion about that. And then from there, they went on to the master planning, which we talked about, generating these three options that they were charged to do and looked at a cost analysis, staffing requirements. Staffing is very interesting out there, there's two of us. One of, one of the individuals is our maintenance engineer, so he basically takes care of the building. And then I'm there, I do most of the scheduling and I do the day-to-day interaction with the groups that come out. And then part of my vision is that I get out now and talk to some of these groups that used to come out and use us and now they're not, even in the county. Why, why aren't some of our agencies using us a little more? And I haven't spent a lot of time on that unfortunately because I'm getting involved in all this other stuff. But, so there's really two of us, which means a lot of this facility is on autopilot, so your people are great. We, they have access cards to come in. So most of the time, we're there to kind of greet them and get everything going for them. And then throughout the day, as our time elapses, we go home and they kind of finish their day and they let themselves in and out however they need to. Ranges, they can come and go. I had your officer last weekend on a Saturday, one of your officers was out there. He called me on Friday and was wondering if he could go out on Saturday and they know how to get in and use the range and it works fine. So, but just a little different, we looked at all of, a lot of our peer facilities around the metro. The difference is, is we're probably one of the only ones that don't have public shooting. So a lot of those other peer facilities, as we refer to them in the study, have fifteen, twenty people on staff because they're dealing with extended hours, with public coming and going, using the ranges. So it's a much different animal to compare apples to apples for that. And then the, the last thing they did was look at some potential funding and partnering options in this, in the study. The space needs analysis, really nothing earth-shaking there, really too much space. The building is way, way bigger than you would need for, for that. There's some, there's some good things about the building. The lower level scenario rooms, I mean, you can fire your non-life rounds down there, but that's something that doesn't happen a lot of other facilities. Just because that building's built like a fortress, you basically can shoot the non-lethal down in the basement and, and that's something that you don't get a lot of other places. But the consensus was it's, it's a tired building, it's old. They've put lipstick on it fifteen years ago and nothing's really happened since then, but it, it meets the, the needs. The, the AV, we hear that time and time again and we spend a lot of time on our audiovisual stuff on a daily basis because it's out of date and trying to get things working when people bring their own stuff in is a challenge, but we do get through that. But, and then it's kind of funny, just some of the stuff that came back out of the study, interviews and survey results are the finishes of the building. I mean, this clientele wants to see nicer amenities, nicer finishes, which kind of surprised me for a rough and tough bunch of people that come in and out of the building. They're worried about the tile in the bathroom, but that's great, but it, and it is, it's tired, it's been there probably since the annex was there was the last time it was actually touched twenty-some years ago. So, but it's just amazing, some of the things that came out in some of those conversations. Again, here's our stakeholder engagement, so a hundred and ten invitations went out for the survey, we only had sixty-one back. The, the one-on-one meetings were really like pulling teeth. So I went to the chiefs' meetings and just pleaded with them to have their officers and the city administrators and so forth respond. And as you can see, out of a hundred and ten, we had twenty-seven people that actually responded back to there. And again, some of the same things, it's tired, but it meets the needs for now. Time and time again, we hear from our outside groups that it's a wonderful facility, they love it, they come down. We get a lot of groups out of the north metro, the Hopkins, the Golden Valleys, all that kind of way. Lakeville's out a lot and it's just, those kind of people just continue to come back because they really like the space. So you never know what you're going to hear day-to-day out there. Again, looked at the current and anticipated costs and the funding compared against our peers. So we did a couple of things. When I first started, a few of us went out and we toured our peer facilities. Some of them are grandiose and new and much different. And some of them, Edina is a very nice facility, a little older, but still very nice. And we both, and then LHB went out on their own. We intentionally didn't go together because we wanted them to hear their own story and we want, we were there for a different reason. But we both kind of came back with some of the same, I, hearing the same things is that, you know, space is limited in, in a lot of these facilities. So finding range space, again, because some of it's public and private, it, it really chews up some of the timing and a lot of the facilities didn't have capacity to take on additional. And a lot of the facilities didn't have capacity to take on additional people. And then a few of them did their operations a little different. Some of them were city, some of them were city-county owned. So just kind of depending on how they ran their finances were a little different in comparison to ours. Fee structure, we're very competitive in our fees, but some of them held that information pretty close to the vest when they were talking about their membership fees. But a lot of them had what was called a tiered tiered membership structure. So in that situation, maybe Shakopee would be a tier one member, and they'd get 1,000 hours a year at X. And then if they went over that, it would go down the road. So again, they they shared the concept, they didn't share a lot of the financial numbers with us for that. So here was their three recommendations they came back with, or their options, I should say. Number one is just status quo, let's just keep things the way it is, make the minimal necessary maintenance repairs to just keep things how it is, focus on our current partners and our users. Option two is what Mr. Reynolds kind of indicated early on about really sticking some money into it and taking this thing to the next level, really to maintain the facility, bring it up to current standards, more active marketing, adjust the staffing levels for more interaction, allowing somebody to get out and do more marketing and sales on this thing and and really make this thing much different than it is today. And then option three is kind of a combination of just the kind of bridge where we're at. Maintain it right now with the idea that you would move it to option two. So make, keep it maintained and repairs with the idea that as you focus on your marketing and so forth and find your funding sources, you'd you'd move it to option two. As a group, as LHB, the the consulting group, their recommendation to the RTF board during their presentation was option two just because they felt that there's a market out there for this facility, not only in the county, but there's a need just because of that range space usage needs out there. So they felt that there was a need for this type of facility here, and and we could definitely fill the space. So that's kind of where it's at. So from here, like I said, the the RTF board will be looking at this March 10th. And again, there's been absolutely no decisions or recommendations or any of that made by anybody at this point, and that's kind of where it's at.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for? For this individual?
I've got lots of questions, but I just.
Thank you for coming, and we appreciate your presentation.
Stop out and see me.
I have. Okay, do we want to get comment from our police and fire that used the facility? Who would like to go first?
I'm closest to the mic, mayor, maybe that'll help. All right, mayor and council, you were right, there really are 103 different things you you could do there. I'll go back to, you know, October 6th last year. We had a Scott County Chiefs meeting, and there were the Carver Sheriff and Chaska Chief were there. It's referenced in the in the master plan that that we got. You know, we talked about whether or not this is really a viable facility for five years out, 10 years out. And the Elko New Market Chief brought it up, raise your hand if you think this should be a a training facility, period, in 10 years from now, and not one hand went up. Five years from now, not one hand went up. There was a general consensus that this thing could be limped along for the next five years, hopefully maybe with some improvements in the range. The reality is, the building, you know, calling it old and weathered is is polite. It it is, it is a tough place to train, and I have a lot of concerns about the second you start removing things and trying to upgrade, this could turn into a black hole financially real quick. We can save money going elsewhere. We've taken a look at that, I've had our instructors look at South Metro, different facilities. The availability, yes, we do use it more than anybody. That is kind of our, we're, we want to get our money's worth out of this. So we do use it as as much as possible, and we even try and host some trainings down there that we sponsor, like a crisis negotiator training that's coming up. We could do that in our own facility. But I just think with the way training is going, the amount of space, yes, it's a very big facility, but even the amount of space we need is actually going to shrink over the over time. I also understand the political animal here. If we, you know, as being the biggest contributor, if we do walk away, where that leaves, you know, other cities. But I also worry, I believe Lakeville is looking at their old Public Works facility and making that into a training facility. Well, is Elko New Market now going to just go across 35 and and train there? And what does that leave us? So when I look at the growing costs that is would be anticipated with any significant upgrades here, I I worry how how much more we can, we'll have to budget. Again, we can conservatively, on the police side, at least $10,000. That's a conservative estimate in '24 that I think we could save by not being a member.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Fire Chief, you're up next.
Yeah, mayor and council, I would say as far as for most of our fire training, we try to do it within the city, you know, using Valley Fair, RAR, buildings like that. So when we need to use it, it's mainly just for the fires, fire suppression. We have to do live active fire once a year for all the firefighters to meet codes and standards. Some years, we get a house in town, some years we don't. So in the years that we don't, that's when we go down and use the RTF more. Generally, it's just coming in that we use it because it's there, we kind of feel obligated to use it. The issues that I've ran into is I go to schedule to use it, and I'm bumped out by Carver County or Chaska, something like that. And then I talk with those those towns, what did you guys pay to use it last night? Well, we paid $1,000. Well, my department paid $35,000. And then when a another agency uses it, that's not part of Scott County, they get a burner operator supplied to them. When you're Scott County Department, you have to provide your own burner operator for the tower, which generally ends up being me or one of our other staff. So it takes a couple of people out of it just to run it. That's what was extremely frustrating when you pay that kind of money, that we're kind of bumped out out on it. A lot of it has just been mismanaged, or we've tried to reach out to like Hennepin Tech or Century College and say, hey, we want to host a class in our county. And they'll say, well, we'll use somewhere, but we're not going to use the RTF just because the AV systems and the the air conditioning and the whatever is so old and outdated. They don't want to ho- host classes there, they'd rather host them at a fire station. So some of those issues have come up, you know, over the years. I can go if, you know, if we didn't get a building, I can go up to Edina or I can go over to Burnsville and use that tower and rent it for, even if I rented it four or five times, $10,000 to $15,000, and I'm and I'm covered for our people. We don't like to leave the city if we don't have to. You know, it's a half hour to drive time down there, running big heavy trucks. Now you're down there, okay, now it's another half hour drive time back, clean, wash everything. We're getting done 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night, you know. So it's it, you really have to limit it and and think of the people's time of what we're going to do down there. You know, even on the classroom side, we do run our Scott County Fire Academy through there, but we try to rotate that around the fire stations as well. So that's the issues we ran into.
All right, Mr. Whiting.
Thank you. This is for fire more, I think, my thoughts. Let's say in a scenario where we pull out of using the RTF and they're maintaining, what what does that do to the other communities? I don't want to say that we're subsidizing the other community's training, but in a sense, we are. And do you think in in a sense that that would have to close it down if we pulled out of that?
I guess I don't unders, you know, don't fully know their financial situation. I know like Elko New Market Fire has never used it. For them, it's just too far away, they're not going to travel that far with their trucks and equipment. I think New Prague, Jordan, Bell Plain may use it more than most. SMSC, the tribe uses it quite a bit for their daytime staffing. You know, for them, it probably works, they have the staffing levels that they can send four, six, or eight people down there. We don't have that yet.
Essentially, it's maybe the tower once a year?
Once or twice a year. Right now, we're we do some standpipe operations for apartment building operations and the burns. So it's four or five times.
All right, thank you, chief. I'm gonna.
Quick question, so you can get your training elsewhere, basically?
The fire training, yeah, I mean, that's that's a specific, specific thing. Yeah, we can go to Edina or Burnsville over the years since I've been on. We've even gone to Minneapolis and done it at some of their burn towers. Obviously, that takes longer to get there, more scheduled times. But that's really the main thing I I need it for. We can use a lot of our businesses or apartment buildings, like I said, RAR, Valley Fair, all these buildings in town. We love to train at them, so we know them. They let us come in, and we can do that technical rescue stuff in town. So it's mainly just for fire.
Any other questions, Mr. Yost?
Just a just a comment, as I was reading through the proposal. It looks like the one positive for that I see that all of the members appreciated was the range. And that is that true?
Mayor, council, I I think so. I, again, that's the the part of the facility that gets used the most in that 103 different things that you could do. I know at our meeting, a lot, what was talked about was a few enhancements to the range, you know, for some of the climate stuff, but putting a a bigger warming house or a classroom in there. And then you don't have, there's really no need to go in the building, period. And that would, that would, there's not too many places you get a 200-yard range. And you have that here. And it's very, I would assume, very difficult to move or build a new range in the middle of the county. You'd have all those noise issues and and so forth. That's, again, the 200-yard range, I think, is a is a real plus down there. I think a classroom, bigger classroom there, bigger warming house, there's a few features you could probably do. But I just don't see us ever having to go inside the building. I don't, I don't believe that that can be taken to the next level in terms of training and so forth.
Mr. Chair, also, if I was reading, read this correctly, that building is a historical site, is that correct? So is that on the National Historical Register?
I believe it is.
It is.
I believe it is, but I the National Register, Historic Registry is a voluntary commitment. So the property could be removed by, you'd have to ask.
Right.
But then you get the political side of, oh gee, you're changing the historical factors of the property. So so you've got it both ways. Let me, let me dive into this since I.
Delaney's over there with a question.
I'm going to be right back to you, okay? Don't don't let me forget. I'm going to kind of give an overview from my perspective, since I was around in '07, '08 when this started, and I've been the liaison on the RTF for quite some time. I read this report, and I read it twice, and, you know, I was involved in many of the meetings. And the things that really jumped out to me was, you know, the study points out that the the property is not conducive to what it's being used for. And when a, when a consultant says that, that's, you know, that's an outside opinion with no real inner interest coming to that conclusion by themselves. The other thing that that catches my attention is, you know, if you take away all the political aspects of it. So we have a facility that currently, at what we're paying per year, is more than what we could train elsewhere for, that's the first. Second, based on the structure, if there is improvements, we're the biggest, we're the second largest, besides Scott Scott County, we're going to be the second largest payer. And if we're not getting the value today, we wouldn't be getting the value then either because we really only use it for two pieces. The the other, you know, you know, the study points out a lot of, a lot of things, you know. There's a lot of space in this building that's way underutilized, but you can't just remove it from the equation. It's part of the building, mainly the dorms. And there are some high, high points, there's within the, within the facility itself, like you say, the range and and some of the other padded training rooms and stuff. But the other thing that really always sticks in the back of my mind when I, when I think about this is, okay, so the same thing happened in '08, '09, where we saw ours go from 40 to 71 and and then back down a little bit. And we're kind of at the mercy of everybody else because realistically, let's do a hypothetical, okay? So we make major improvements to this site, and other members drop out. Now there's fewer members, and the the ones left to carry it are going to pay substantially more. And and there's no way really to to budget for that because you don't know. It's you're really at somebody else's onus, if you will. And, you know, if that happened, you would be way over what you could be training for somewhere else. Now, on the other side, the good comments and and high use is coming from non-members, according to the study. There's zero that stops us from continuing using this facility for the needs that we need if we're not a member. You just pay for it as you use it, okay? You'd pay for it as you use it. Will it, would it cost more? Depends how much you use it, depends what the rates are at the time. And if they made improvements and we were not a member, I would imagine that the individual time, if you use it for a specific purpose, that the rate would probably be higher. But now you have the choice of whether you want to use that or a different facility, you're not forced into it. So these are all the things that just kind of go in my mind. Just wanted to throw it out there, it's it's, you know, there's a lot of discussions, all different angles. There's a lot of space in that building that's just doesn't serve what we're looking for. The the Great Room is just awesome, if you've ever been out there and looked at it. It's got some really unique carved amenities and pillars and stuff, and it's just really nice. But it's not, it it, them features don't serve what you're trying to accomplish. Mr. Delaney?
I was going to say, if you look at the master plan conclusion, it basically spells out that that you're going to have to do a new building anyways at some point in time, 10 to 15 years out. So you do a big investment now, and then we're back having the same discussions 10 to 15 years ago.
And that was one of the discussions that we had at the executive board. The last one that we had was, and and I actually brought that up because, you know, if you're going to seek grants or bonds or whatever, legislative bonds to 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 try to upgrade this site of any capacity, it's going to look really bad when you come back 10, 15 years later and say, geez, we want to build a new site now. So do you have focus on just some of the things that you currently have out there that are really utilized and put a long-term plan together for a new facility that's built just for these specific purposes? You know, some of the other things that came up was, you know, the Milo Training Simulator out there. Jay, me and you used that way back when, and geez, it had to be 10 years ago or or so.
My gun didn't shoot straight.
We switched, and I still beat you. We switched, and I still beat you. But any, but that's the same equipment currently, and same with the driving simulator. And these are technologies that that are so, today, they're so outdated now. But even if you were to replace them, soon as you replace them, it's like a computer. It's, you know, two years later, it's something else. And I, I, well, but then if you upgrade it, as soon as you do that, it's outdated because, you know, you've got virtual reality is probably going to come in, and then artificial intelligence is going to come in, and all these other technologies are going to come in where some of these other places have outside companies that just come in in every four or five years and and do that equipment upgrade, and it's part of their agreement with that other facility. So.
Mayor and council, some of that too, that VR, virtual reality, there's companies go around, and we can bring them in-house and have them do matter stations or things like that rather than.
That's the future, the VR.
Yeah, absolutely. So what does Mr. Whiting?
You know, I think Shakopee is going to be driving this. The decision that we come to is is going to be setting the future in motion, I think. Now, I s, I looked in here, and and the agreement does look severable to me within the, you know, you pay out for a year, it only looked like your obligations. I think, you know, the bond obligation goes through 2027. I would suggest we pin that so we don't shortchange it. I would suggest we pin that so we don't, uh, shortchange it on our bond obligation. But I wouldn't be interested in taking on any more debt for anything out there. That gives them a few years to say, uh, get a plan together, and we move forward somewhere else or, or, uh, 'cause Shakopee's taking their stuff, uh, elsewhere.
Yeah, and I, and I'm, I'm not sure I'd have to defer to legal about the twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-seven bonds, because I think the current agreement says, hypothetical, again, if, if, if we decide we're gonna drop out like Carver County did or something, I think you pay the remaining of the current year and the following year.
I think we have an obligation to twenty-twenty-seven. I think we fill it.
Mr. Yost?
Well, I, I guess when I, when I look at it, and I, I agree with you on the going through the bond, finishing that run of it. And, and I did notice that one of the points that was highlighted on the thing was it's too low of a get-out fee. Was one of the points that was made up in there. So I, I, I think that's probably one thing. And as I look at it, and, and it's really a facility for Scott County. And we are the driving force. We were the biggest one, biggest community. But I, I think the county as a whole, um, needs to step up, um, a little bit more, so the burden isn't on us. The burden shouldn't really be placed on the county to have these facilities.
Just to be fair, Scott County pays half.
Yeah, I know. I, I understand. But I, but I'm saying, as I listen to everybody here, they're saying we're, we're paying too much. We're not competitive, um, in the marketplace. So it seems to me that the county needs to kick in some more and make it a county regional training facility rather than a scale regional training facility. And when I, we look at the building, I think of the building, I think of the old women's prison. And they were willing to sell that to us for a dollar. I know some of the people here would, probably might remember that. But the reasoning was, when you got into that building, it had asbestos, and it had a lot of issues with tearing it down. Which, again, that's what I think of when I hear of a building of this age and this vintage in there. And I heard some comments about, you know, maybe we need to put a different facility in to do that. I mean, we really have to take a harder look at what it would cost. I don't know, has anybody evaluated that yet? What it would take to replace that facility or what it would take to cut it? Yeah, no, nothing like that has occurred. So to me, that's something that I would need to know to feel comfortable with moving forward with any kind of program to do this, 'cause that's gonna be a huge cost, if it does in fact have those kind of issues.
Well, and then you would look at location, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that wasn't in the study, and I wish it was.
It was in the study. One of the things in the study about the location, uh, from some aspects, they liked the seclusion. But then other aspects, it was like, okay, we're there for a day of training, and there's no, you know, fast food joints or, or, or restaurants or whatever close enough by to be convenient for your lunch break.
That's right.
Um, you know, you can't go to the convenience store right across the street and, or whatever. So that, that did come up in the study, but there was pros and cons on both sides. But I think the majority were on the side of the convenience of having these other services around it. But then if it's a county facility, you'd wanna have it somewhat centrally located in your county, so that's accessible by all, right? Um, and I don't know what the cost would be, but I can assure you, it won't be going down anytime soon.
That's right. And do you want that in your neighborhood?
Right. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question, just so, the, the bullet point that was on there, the penalty is relatively low for partners departing. Is that what you were talking about, the one year and a half?
It's written in there. I'll find the page.
What was the question?
The penalty, the bullet point that it had, the penalty is relatively low for partners departing?
Well...
Was that what you were talking about?
In the, in the study, the consultant said that the finding was that the penalty to, uh, of a member to withdraw was relatively low. And the, the current contract is the way I understand it. I'm certainly not a lawyer. I would defer to Reynolds or Thompson. But I, I believe it's, you know, if you decide to, uh, no longer be a member, you'd be paying for the rest of the current year, and, and I think it's the following year, too. I, I think that's how I, I read it.
I have it here in, uh, page three.
And, and I, I think what the consultant is pointing out is, you know, we're having the conversation, okay, what happens if other people drop out? Do we take on more of that burden? And I think they're looking at it from the standpoint of, yeah, that's a legitimate concern by membership. Um, how do we give them a little more comfort that that won't happen by having new agreements with, you know, a new facility or an upgraded facility or whatever, um, that new members signing up, the contract would be more difficult for them to leave. I don't, and hypothetically, maybe it's a five-year thing bef, that, to get out, and that way you don't have such a instant burden on other members. And I'm just making this up as I go, trying to get in somebody else's mind. Um, Mr. Whiting?
Yeah, under, on the mem, memorandum of agreement, public safety training facility, um, it's under page two-seventeen of three-thirty-nine in your packet. It also says page three, item E, it says the amendment withdrawal or termination. Now, first off, I'll, I'll mention D. It says that all parties will seek in good faith to resolve policy, equipment, funding, and technology and other issues. But for withdrawal, uh, this memo, memorandum of understanding or agreement, uh, may be amended upon agreement with the county, community, and participating cities. Second is, a party may withdraw from the agreement upon providing a written notice to the board at least ninety days prior to the end of the current calendar year of its intent to withdraw at the end of the calendar year. With, uh, withdrawing party shall be responsible for a proportion of its, for its proportional contribution of the annual operating contribution through the remainder of the calendar year and continue its responsibility for its proportional contribution to the annual debt service for one year after withdrawal.
And that's basically what I've been saying, so. But I appreciate lawyer Whiting.
Yeah, well, sorry. I saw it. I read it, and I just wanted to make sure we all knew what we're doing, but it's, it's broader than that.
Yep. So where do we go from here? Staff have enough direction?
Uh, well, I guess I need a, a clarifying question from someone from scale or Scott County. And that is, is if the, if a city decides they're not in favor of option two, does that mean they can be overridden by the RTF board? In other words, can the RTF board bind the cities to a decision?
I'm not sure. I haven't looked at the agreement, so I, I don't wanna...
Can you, I'm sorry, can you come to the mic, please?
I, I guess I, my name is Troy Beam. I'm the Fleet and Facilities Manager for Scott County. Um, I would have to say that I think that the, the intention of the board member is to represent the city. Would be my, um, estimation of that, um, decision would be. So I would think that whatever the city decides today or whenever, I would say that, um, that would be carried back by the member, the board member of the RTF.
And then if other cities outvoted that board member, the, the board would carry the day?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Well, Mr., Mr., one second. Mr. Reynolds, first, it would go to the executive body. And if the executive body did what you suggest, where a member was opposed to it, but the majority of the members of the executive board voted to move forward on something, it would then have to go to the full membership, I believe. Correct?
That could be, yes.
And I have a hard time believing that an executive body could bind a city, one member of a body could bind a city to a multimillion-dollar agreement. But...
That's, we need to get clarity on that, because ultimately, that means the only option we would have is to withdraw.
Correct. Mr. Yost?
And I guess the question I have is, if the city of Shakopee would decide to withdraw from this, what would that do to this, to the RTF?
Well, the, the burden would be on the rest of the remaining parties, and I would think that the burden would be on the rest of the membership.
And, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
And I guess as I look at the numbers and, and seeing the, you know, the volume that we do, that it would be pretty egregious for the rest of the communities to take up what we put in.
Yes, it would. And I, ju, just so you know, too, then, and the county is currently contributing five-hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, so two-hundred and fifty of it is the operating, and the other two-fifty is the capital.
More than half then, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Did you, did you have any consent, consensus? Did you have a position on it, uh, where, where you thought we should be here? Did you get enough? Yeah, I think I got enough information.
We have...
Yeah, and if I could, you know, we just kinda wanna educate at this point. We'll see what, I'll figure out what the process is, and, and, and I'll get that out to you. And then ultimately, I guess we'll have to make a decision, uh, as to how you want us to proceed then.
One follow-up. Most studies you see, you'd see, uh, do nothing. And then you'd see, in this case, I would say, uh, you know, what if we totally rebuild and look at it a different way? This study looked at, pretty well focused on, we're gonna maintain what we have. And that's how it looked to me. I didn't see any other major options.
Well, there's three options.
Right, but not...
Maintain as is, uh, make these, ma, maintain as is, make improvements to bring it up to, to the snuff. And the third option was, uh...
Total rebuild.
What was the third option?
The bridge, bridging option, the...
Bridge it and, and, and kind of, yeah. Right.
Never a re, complete rebuild.
No.
No, I brought that up at the executive, last executive meeting, when, when there was discussion about going after bonds for a major uplift of the facility. My mind was, why would you do that to an existing facility with a study that says it's not conducive to what it's being used for? And you'd be better off making a longer range plan for a new sp, building, possibly on a new site or that site, whatever. Um, and focus all your energy on that, so you'd, at the end of the day, you'd have a facility designed just for that purpose, and you wouldn't be going back to the well twice. Um, 'cause I think it really makes it hard to go back the second time around after you
Right.
do the first time.
Mm, that's awkward.
But I, I, I just keep going back to the very beginning. If, if we've got our two departments that use it saying that they could save money somewhere else. And it's outdated, um, we really only use them two facets. Um, and what happens if somebody else drops out? The ball could be on the other foot, Mr. Yost, where, 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 we're probably gonna see that now that Carver County has, has, uh, backed out of their membership, so, you know. And they were very open, saying, you know what, we're gonna keep using it. We're just gonna use it on an as-needed basis. And there's absolutely nothing that would stop us from doing that.
Right.
Right, except, well, Mr. Chair, the only point I would make, eventually, it's just gonna go away. There, there is gonna be nothing to use if everybody drops out.
Right.
'Cause obviously, we know that the dollars that we're seeing generated by the cities that are putting into it is what's keeping it afloat. So those, and maybe the thing is to adjust our rates, maybe adjust the rates, so those ones that are coming in. We see it at the community center, too, to a little bit of degree, with some of the township folks that come in and, and do that. You know, this is an ongoing issue as to people that pay on a per-time basis versus somebody that has to put the millions of dollars into the facility to have it there. And there's a cost to that.
Be a competitive...
Yeah, exactly. There's a balancing that has to occur.
You know, and, and the opposite could happen, you know. Hypothetically, the city could pull its fifty or sixty thousand dollar a year contribution, and ten other communities sign up to use it. I mean, that's a possibility, too. You just don't know. So, anything else on this topic?
I just have one, just as long as we have the people here from, from there.
Sure.
Is, it's, it's very disturbing to sit up here and listen to the fire chief talk about getting bumped, about somebody coming in to pay on a per-use basis, and here we're the largest. And I don't wanna be the bully in the room and say that, but when we have a scheduled time, it would be appropriate that that time be held. Um, in my view. And again, I open it up for everybody else, but I, I, I don't like to hear that, that we're getting bumped for somebody that's not a member. And giving that, getting the...
Yeah, it could've, it could've been a scheduling issue, where somebody...
I, I get it, but I'm just saying that it's not good to hear that when, when you're making that kind of...
Somebody, somebody that's not a member scheduled a set time for something. And we, as a member, we get to go wherever we wanna go. And we showed up at the same time somebody had a...
What happened?
I, I don't know. I'm saying that's a possibility, and if that's the case, I mean, that's gonna happen.
One last thing, Mayor. Um, I feel that we are being very considerate, thinking about what we could do if we pulled out for other cities. But yet we, I feel we need to think about us, right? I mean, because how about they all pull out and we're the only ones left? So I feel we just need to think about the effect for us. And, and if it's not working for us, it's not working for us.
Right.
So, that's my thought.
Great discussion. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I'm just gonna wait just for a second here. Item nine B one, public works organizational chart change. Mr. Loney, you wanna take this?
Mayor, uh, you may know this next individual. Delighted to have Mr. Loney back, who spent decades at the city, uh, in his current interim position. Uh, and we're delighted that he, uh, was willing to come in and to help us out in our, in our, our time, that we need, uh, some help to look at the internal structure of the organization that he used to run. And he's gonna give you a little history and talk about some of the decisions that we actually discussed, uh, when he left his retirement letter on my desk as I was at a conference, because he didn't want me to try to talk him out of it. So with that being said, Mr. Loney.
Thank you.
I recognize you from somewhere.
I, my hair's kinda bleached out a little bit. That's what's happened. Uh, retirement is good, though, so let me tell you that. Uh, first of all, thanks. I'm very honored to be back here. It was twenty-eight years ago to this date that I had my first council meeting, so I have a little bit of Shakopee in me, a little bit of Shakopee history, a little bit of love for the city, and it's, I've always, I do keep track of the council meetings and see how things are going here. And it's really, it's really wonderful to be back. But as Bill mentioned, um, I have a little history, you know. When I started here, the town was fourteen thousand population. And Terry and Matt knows some of the history of some of the things we went through in that growth period, and, and Mr. Whiting, too. So there was always been growth in the city from fourteen, from nineteen ninety-five till now. It's, it's just been growing. With that, the departments, as, as a director, I always had to make adjustments to the structure of the departments due to the growth. We always had to add leads, and we had to add supervisors. We, we changed positions to a higher level because of the growth in the demands of the city. That's just, that's just what's happened. And now I'm looking at, you know, the, as, uh, Mr. Reynolds said, I came back to look at how things are. And when I did leave five and a half years ago, we sat down and said, okay, what should I do? He asked me what, what are the options? And one of the options was, well, you can hire someone at my position that I had, a Director of Public Works, city engineer. Or you could look at splitting the titles and go with a engineering department and public works department. And at this point, I mean, I'm showing you right now on the chart here, this is the current organization. I also highlighted the various positions that are vacant right now. Um, in the very, there's five vacancies in the, uh, engineering division or the engineering part. And there's actually two in the, uh, public works right now, a mechanic and a ma, a street supervisor. With that, that's occurred. On the left side is mainly the engineering part of the organization. On the right side is the public works. So what I did, I looked at it, and again, looking at this, what I did is just split the public works director and the city engineer into two positions. And this would be the public work side. The, uh, public work superintendent was, was in here, and now we're showing that as a public works director. And all the other positions stayed the same. There is a vacancy with the street supervisor due to a retirement. Uh, and then there's a mechanic position due to the mechanic actually moving over to IT, which is still, that person is staying with the city. The next slide, then, shows then an engineer, a city engineer would be head of the Department of Engineering. And basically, the positions would stay the same. Someday, the city engineer who comes in here, takes that position, can look at, are there adjustments that he would like to make to the structure? But I didn't wanna make too many wholesale changes at this point, other than just split the departments. Now, with that said, Mr. Reynolds will have another person reporting to him. The city engineer and the public works director would both report to the city administrator. And that structure has worked, I checked with Chaska and Savage, that they have a similar structure. It's worked well for them. I mean, either structure could work, but this one, I would say because of the growth of the city, it, the, the, the level of the growth of the engineering department is such that they could use a... It, the, the, the level of the growth of the engineering department is such that they could use a separate department head. And also, the fact of the matter is, the market conditions are such that trying to find a public works director and city engineer is very difficult. Finding a city engineer might be difficult, but is less difficult. You'll have a better shot at hiring a city engineer. So the growth of the city, the fact of the matter, it's easy to hire a city engineer, and this structure has worked for other nearby cities. That's why I'm recommending the reorganization as I am.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I actually talked to a headhunter, uh, last night on another issue. And specifically mentioned this in passing as one of the other things that we're working on. Uh, and, and she said, well, good luck finding a city engineer, public works director. She currently is managing a search for that position right now in the northern part of, uh, the Twin Cities and is having a terrible job doing it. Uh. We do know that there, with, with, by allowing each individual part of what is currently a s- a single department to focus on their own areas. It's extremely difficult to ask someone to manage both of these, especially in the size of, of the organization that we have here. Uh, and it, it, it. You're, you're essentially taking a, an engineer and trying to make them into, um, you know, a, a, something that they're probably really not, not built for.
A looney?
Well, that's, well, you know, he.
There's only certain unicorns out there.
Well, and I, and I'll tell you, uh, Bruce tried to retire on me for six months. And I continually talked him out of it. And because, uh, he was an exceptionally valued asset to this organization. And, uh, him and I did sit down and talk a lot about what are the next steps? Do we look at splitting the department? At that point, I said, no, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that right now. But even then, it, we had a tough time filling that, uh, department. Uh, we did not get a, a large group of, of people that wanted to, to take that, and that was back then. And now engineers are being gobbled up by consulting firms like crazy, as you can see by some of our vacancies. Uh, and it is, it's a total different environment, and I believe that this is the best structure for us to succeed with in the future.
Mr. Looney, if I recall in the past, uh, we, we kinda had a split, this was a while back. Where we had, uh, Mike Hollander was the superintendent of public works, you were the engineer. Um, it, so at that time, it was kind of a split, like you're proposing. I don't know if it was on paper or if that's just the way we operated, but it seemed to work good then.
Actually, when I was hired in nineteen ninety-five, I was the director of public works and city engineer. There was a period of time where there was just a, a city engineer and a public works director, superintendent. That goes before my time. Um, when I took the job here, I was both. And, um, but, uh, Mike Hollander took over here, he paused his spot, become the public works superintendent. So, yes, so he, public work side is handled pretty much by the superintendent. The director kinda manages things, makes sure things are running good. You, you have to be on both sides, but, and then report to the, obviously to the administrator and to the council. Um, but that position has always been there in my twenty-two and a half years. So, so right now, and again, looking at the market, the size of the city. Everything is pointing that, and this can work, this, I mean, both, both structures could work if you find the right people. You're gonna probably find a better chance of finding the, the people, but I also feel right now, if you look at the amount of work, engineering, you're doing big projects. You know, you're doing pad bridges, you're doing riverbanks, you have some very big projects going on. The engineering staff is very, very overworked. And they, and, and they need that focus, and you need that focus working with development. I don't see development slowing down. So you really need somebody working with development, planning, in parks. And just to make a good point here, that doesn't mean engineering's not gonna work with public works. You, you, you still have to have that, you better have good coordination between these two departments. Mr. Reynolds will have to get his referee shirt on whistle if it doesn't happen, cause that's what, you know, they, they just have to work. And I've talked to the other cities in Chaska and Savage, they do work together, they have meetings, they discuss things. That's not gonna change. The biggest thing is there'll be more of a focus on the engineering side by one person and a more of a focus on the public work side by one person. And both reporting to the city administrator.
Mr. Whiting?
Yeah, if you could click back to the current state, uh, of our, our org chart there. I just don't know how you managed all that, and that's a lot, that's a lot of people, a lot of moving parts. Um, compared to the, the proposed, uh, future state here. That's a lot more manageable for a person and for communication purposes. I'm not sure how you could know what one department's doing on a regular basis, uh, when things are going haywire in another, so.
Yeah, just, just to, for instance, when I first started in the public work side, we only had a foreman and maintenance operators. If you look at the structure now, you have supervisors, you have foremans all over the place.
And a lot of projects.
We have a lot more structure in place now than we did in nineteen ninety-five. So, there, I mean, that's just it, the, the, the city has grown, the structure has to change and grow with it.
Mr. Yost?
Oh, thank you, cause that was what I was gonna bring up, sorry. I was gonna say, you came in when there were fifteen thousand people, now we're bumping up against fifty thousand. And I think it's time that the, uh, structure, uh, did, needs to be changed. And I also, just from my experience on SPU, and we went out to hire a, uh, after Marv Athman retired, we went out to get an electrical, uh.
Lineman?
Line, or supervisor.
Line supervisor.
And it was interesting, we could get somebody that would do both, that came from cities that had engineering and electrical together. But they were all towns of fifteen thousand, and they were small little towns isolated out in the middle of nowhere. And they were willing to come here and, and look at that same thing. Unfortunately, we're not a fifteen thousand.
Right.
Person community, and we're fifty thousand, so we really do have to, I think, make these steps. And I, I do appreciate you coming on board so quickly and having this already in mind, that's, I'm, I'm amazed. Thank you, Bruce.
Yeah, well, there's one other piece of the puzzle, unless there's any more questions.
Any other questions?
Um, one of the things I was also tasked to look at is, okay, how do we start rebuilding? Getting things going and, and, in that transition period, trying to fill these positions. We, there is a need to have additional support from a consultant to help with the duties that a city engineer has and a project engineer. So I sent out a proposal to our five consultants in the pool, three of them responded. We reviewed those proposals and WSB was selected to provide that. Um, in the audience here is John Bradford, who would be our next temporary city engineer. Um, just for budgeting reasons, right now, with the five empty engineer positions, it's thirteen thousand K per week that we're not spending. So there's adequate funds in order to provide this service. Um, and we structured it in such a way that it can be flexible, they can put so many hours in as needed or not, depending on the week and the workload. So, on, on your packet here also is to enter into professional service agreement for those engineering services. And those are the two requested actions, approve the, the new public works organization structure changes. And approve a public or professional service agreement with WSB.
Do you know if Chuck Rickert is still with WSB?
I think so.
Chuck, yes?
Yeah.
Haven't seen him in many years, I just had to ask, go ahead.
We should put a line in your contract, you can't take our future engineers after we hire them. We're feeder, I think, sometimes.
They've been notorious for that, I think.
Did you just last one to, uh, South State College?
Okay, it happens, alright.
Any other questions of staff? What's the wishes of the council?
Do we need to do, there's two of them, do we need to do one at a time or all together, all?
Yeah.
I would do these separate, cause they kinda.
Okay, I'll take the first one.
I, before you go, one more question. Do we, do we anticipate enough slowdown to justify not hiring all of these positions? Maybe just not, not hire one? That, that was backward.
Are you talking the permanent?
That was, that was, that was backward. Hire them all except one. Uh, graduate, is it the graduate or the lowest one? You've got a couple.
Yeah.
We go through them though.
Well, the market might dictate who we can hire, we may not be able to fill them all. But the workload is there, I mean, we actually are moving some projects, delaying them because of the staffing level. But if we did hire back, we can move some of those projects up again. So there is, there is the workload there.
Two graduate en- engineers. Do they tend to stay, do they get their feet wet and?
Yeah, this has usually been a good, uh, practice, you know, breeding ground for people to get their experience. And then they get enough experience and they usually move on.
We, we're a grinder, I mean, the engineering department is exceptionally busy. Um, and we are not overstaffed. And I, I'm, I'm worried about the workload that these gentlemen have been, uh, dealing with in the last year, uh, alone. Uh, and, and, and Bruce has talked to each and every one of the remaining engineers. And, you know, essentially talking about what the plan is and asking, are you going to stay? Um, and my fear has always been that, uh, if we do not do something, that we're going to mentally, well, they are mentally exhausted. I don't think there's any doubt about that.
I, I just don't wanna get in a position where we, we hire all these people and then we don't have the work to keep them busy.
I am not worried about that in the least.
Okay.
Ready?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make, uh, the first motion to approve the public works organizational structure changes.
Is there a second? Mr. Yost?
I'll take that second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Contreras, second by Mr. Whiting, to move the structural changes for the public work slash engineering as presented. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes unanimously, Mrs. Contreras.
The second one, I'll take this, oh, he wants to take it.
Make a motion to approve the professional service agreement for engineering services with WSB.
No, second it.
Motion by Mr. Delaney, seconded by Ms. Contreras, any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes unanimously. Give me a new pen, I don't like this pen. Nope, no, I really don't like it. Item number ten, ten A, city bill list. Any questions on the city bill list? Item ten B, liaison reports, we'll start off on the left, Mr. Yost.
Well, I attended the, uh, interview process for the SPU, um, with Mr. Lehman and the vice chair. I don't remember what his name is now from the SPU. And I think we had good discussion with the candidate that we had, and, uh, things were well, and we approved the candidate here earlier tonight, so.
Thank you.
It was a, a good conversation.
Thank you. Ms. Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. So for, um, the school board, I attended the January twenty, twenty-third meeting. They had some good things to point out. For Saber Pride, they had NASA visit the Shakopee High School as part of a national program. And NASA, the NASA program allows students from around the country to work on prototypes for the space program. The high school was one of six Minnesota schools. Um, and these are obviously great opportunities for our students. And we heard one of the teachers say that the kids were excited to say, to put on the resume, we work for NASA. Nice one. Um, they also talked about how the Shakopee schools received seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the Minnesota Department of Education. As part of a statewide incentive to diversify the state's teachers workforce. The district plans to use the money to encourage students to pursue teaching, especially students of color and American Indian students. Um, on the twenty-sixth, I attended the chamber, um, annual meeting with, um, Councilor Whiting and Councilor Delaney and city staff. Where the, our police department and public works report recognized for their amazing work they do, um, how they help out at, um, Rhythm on the Rails. And then also attended the scale executive board meeting on the third. I talked a bit about the watershed management, uh, management study, but the main discussion will be held this Friday at the scale meeting. There's also talk about establishing a standalone water study team. And the purpose of that team is to provide a structural forum to identify, build, and enhance areas of potential collaboration and improve efficiency. More to come. Um, and we also talked about the law, bylaws and if changes needed to be made, and none were made. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Whiting?
Thank you, uh, we had MVTA on the twenty-fifth, and I have a few things we, uh, were working on. He, uh, talked about it that time and are working on in the future here. We're gonna grant for our Burnsville Transit Station Mobility Hub Project. Our mo- new mobile app, uh, if you wanna download the MVTA app, we have a new app, it's called Ride MVTA. Uh, just recently launched, uh, great details on.
Do the scheduling on there?
All that stuff, yeah, it's, it's an amazing app, so check that out, uh, Ride MVTA. And of course, the, what, a big concern, um, and this just happened, I didn't get an update since the meeting on Friday. But the Renaissance Festival discussions with, uh, um, MVTA trying to propose a plan to provide, uh, uh, state fair-like service for Renaissance Festival, Festival. To avoid all the congestion issues that we saw in the past. So diligently trying to keep, uh, Renaissance afloat and keeping, uh, changing the way people get there though.
Right.
And then, uh, of course, the luncheon, the chamber luncheon, congratulations to staff, um, well deserved. So, um, got some awards there and, uh, great to see the chambers, uh, plans and, and future, uh, for the summer. And I haven't listed the, the Rhythm on the Rails bands yet, but I'm sure that's coming up, and, uh, it sounds like it's gonna be fun.
Always is, Mr. Delaney?
Mr. Chair, can I ask Mr. Whiting a question? Your MVTA, um, what are they seeing the riders, cause I, I drive by, I get out on, uh, east end of town and, uh, the park and ride that's out there. It seems like it's not a park and ride anymore, it's kind of an open parking lot.
Change things, definitely.
Yeah, is, are, are we gonna see that, or, I mean, what are they seeing for that, are they gonna see that change? Do they believe, or?
And I've been bringing it up here, be sure you're just recent, uh, back with us, but, uh, so it has been a change in, in the way we do business. And that, uh, that park and drive downtown, part of our service has changed dramatically. And we're still doing some of that, but it, it cut back a lot.
Do they, do they think it's gonna come back?
Well, they're changing the dynamic into more of, uh, uh, connection, you call for the connection, what we used to call dial-a-ride.
Yeah, I, I.
That kinda thing, we don't have that service, uh, through MVTA in Shakopee, but they do out in Burnsville now. So those direct service lines is maybe gonna be some more of the, um, uh, the way we go. I think, uh, Southwest is providing some of that for Shakopee.
But the ridership, some of it has come back.
It's, it's coming back, but it's not where it was.
It's not over there either, I guess, right? More of it's coming out of Marshall.
I think what Jay's saying is they're go- either going to, to, uh, Marshall or Burnsville for the main lines.
Right, it, it's just not as much of that, uh, traffic downtown, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Delaney?
Um, has really, really, um, actually some pretty interesting things happen. Uh, one sixty-nine corridor collision, got a chance to go down to the Capitol, that was really cool. Um, it's, it's really, um, incredible to see things come to fruition, I guess, actually get put in place along one sixty-nine. Uh, to me, that's one of the big payoffs for, with, being with one sixty-nine coalition. Um, there's three projects that are currently being considered funding, one is the Sand Creek Township, that's basically one sixty-nine and Bus City Overpass. Uh, fourteen mil with a four point six mil state legislative funding request remaining, that's pending. Uh, City of Jordan, um, pretty much everybody knows that area down, there were the McDonald's and, and everything in that.
Two eighty-two and nine.
Uh, two eighty-two, yeah. Uh, forty-seven point two million total cost, nine point one state legislator funding request remaining. And of course, Saint Lawrence Township, uh, one sixty-nine and fifty-nine. Uh, twenty, two point three mil with a two point five mil legislative, legislative funding request remaining. Um, this is exciting to see this work going on, got a chance to talk to, uh, Ben Bigberg and Brad Tapke and Eric Pratt, and we went down there. That was, uh, that was, was pretty cool, um, as far as watching these projects come to fruition. Um, also Spuck Commission, um, got a chance to go to that. Um, found out the meeting times, there are now first month, first Monday of the month, um, will be the meeting times. Also now quarterly, they're going to go with, uh, workshops, which I'm looking forward to. Um, they're gonna talk about water, infrastructure, finance, most of you might think these are boring, but I, I, this stuff's just cool to me. Um, electrical infrastructure, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, told me what my roles are as far as providing details on the roles for the commission and liaison. Um, they also talked about Spuck worked with, uh, city police and fire on identifying hydrants that were, need to be cleared with snow. And I think they identified eight and, uh, to get cleared. And they talked about twenty forty carbon free initiative, um, there's, again, state legislature went through that, uh, Spuck. Spuck is presently at forty-three percent this last year. And also, if customers want to move toward a renewable energy, there is, you can, you can make that request, it's like a three dollar ad on your bill. Then we went into closed session and we talked about water treatment plants, which that was also pretty cool and exciting. I did not realize those could be next door to your house. And they gave me example of one at twenty sixteen Holly Road, and you would not know it was a water treatment plant. And you, and we pulled it up and I, actually, I'm gonna drive by it.
The pump?
Yeah, the pump, yeah.
Well, it's not the treat, we don't have a treatment plant, yeah.
But that is just cool to see how those things go. Also did the interview, couple of boards there and then the Chamber Commerce Lunch, but yeah, let's hope I didn't ramble too much. Pretty exciting stuff.
Great liaison reports from the whole council. I'll try to be brief on mine and what I did with my time, which, you know, didn't do much. On the twentieth of January, we hosted Senator Klobuchar here for, for the Innovation Center Federal Dollars. Most of the council was there. Twenty-fifth, attended the State Capitol with Counselor Delaney and the one sixty-nine corridor coalition. It was a great opportunity to bring Mr. Delaney up to speed on what I've been working on for many years, actually since its inception at the one sixty-nine corridor coalition. He could see all of the boards and all of the numbers and meet all the other members. So, it was a very worthwhile event for multiple reasons. Not only was I there lobbying for things that make Shakopee work better transportation-wise, but it gave me the opportunity to have you meet the other members and get you up to speed on all the past successes and, and current projects and some of the future concerns that we have, which has always been the river, crossing the river, wherever it might be, whether it's one sixty-nine, one oh-one, or, or forty-one future crossing. Where was I here? Twenty-eighth, went up to the Hockey Day Minnesota unveiling at the Rank Two at the Ice Arena. Thirtieth, staff and I met with Scott County and, and some commissioners and their staff. We also met with Hockey Day Minnesota Shakopee Committee here at City Hall, discussed logistics and potential locations and these types of things, just a kind of a kickoff brainstorming session. February two and February four, sat in on the interviews. I met with Councilmember Contreras. We spent an hour going over RTF and scale stuff as, as I did with Counselor Delaney. I wanted to bring her up on where I'm leaving off as the liaison to them two efforts. Appreciate her time on that. I have been in contact with Representative Angie Craig and Senator Smith and Senator Klobuchar on some concerns that were brought to our attention about mail issues in Shakopee. Apparently, it's much worse in some other areas, so count your blessings, but there are issues in Shakopee, totally aware of it. And we made our federal team fully aware of it, too, since it is a federal issue that we really can't control. So, that's my report. Mr. Reynolds?
The only thing I was gonna add is that, yes, I get my mail one day a week now, so.
Paycheck, right? They can keep the bills.
But I have nothing, I'm fine, thank you.
Any other business? Ms. Contreras?
Really quick, I'm honored to be sitting surrounded by so much knowledge.
Motion to stay here until midnight would be in order?
Make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, February twenty-first at seven PM.
Seconded by Mr. Delaney. Motion made by Mr. Yost, seconded by Mr. Delaney. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.